For a very bright future for Papa Nigini. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Secretary. Any more officers want to add in or otherwise? Our, you want to ask a question, member for Owaria? You can start off with us.
Thank you, Chairman. I think the ministers give full breath on, maybe answer all the questions. So that's very good. I'm really pleased to know that we have, we have the NEC, sorry, EC policy and is going to the cabinet for to put EC teachers on payroll. That's, that's something that none of us ministers here, but we will, we have two vice ministers here. So we should support that. We should support that and we should put the EC teachers on payroll. Okay, my, my question is now we have the EC teachers on payroll. Now the, do we have colleges for, you say grade twelve certificate? Everybody can get a grade twelve certificate. But primary, primary EC is the, is the first education. It's the part where you have to save the mind and mindset of the child. And it should be considered the most, most important, important stage of teacher, child development. So we need very, very qualified teachers to teach us EC's teachers. Now, do you have colleges for EC teachers? Or are you thinking of, you said the development, development, diploma, sorry. Diploma should be the standard to qualify that EC, which is good. But do we have specific, we have colleges, teachers colleges, but do we have specific program for, for training for them? Because you're going to put teachers on payroll and now the EC schools are coming on board and you have the curriculum for EC, which is ACE.
ACE.
Yeah.
Accelerated.
ACE. So now we, we, where is the colleges for the teachers? For my, my good minister, and the question is going to the minister.
Minister, before you answer, I just want to give you this overview to, when I was doing my masters in UK, the early childhood schools, their teachers were university graduates. Because in UK, they recognize that early childhood education is the key. We give them a good start. We prepare them well. The kids have, you know, better chance of, you know, progressing well in education. So they put a lot of effort and resources into early childhood. Up to now, elementary, you know, in the past, secretary, we just get the people who just leave grade ten or grade twelve or, we, we are not giving the, this early childhood, the attention and, you know, resources and that it deserve. So now we are coming to early childhood and you all are setting the qualification at grade twelve and then diploma. You know, that's still a challenging or questionable sort of approach. Because not only, you know, it's the start of their life and their education, but it's sensitive to deal with children at this time. If we don't manage them well or we abuse them or something, it can traumatize their entire life or affect their learning process. So that's why in developed countries, they give it this highest attention. In Japan, Minister, they follow your model. That kids are not there to learn maths or whatever, whatever. They are learned, they are taught to how to behave and to be responsible citizen and to even clean their classroom and take responsibility and respect each other and they're giving it, it's a sort of a, you know, the lessons to, for ethics and responsibility before they go to primary school and start doing maths and science and whatever. They, they, it's a time for them to play and learn. So you've got the concept right, but maybe our concern is that all teachers here in grade twelve, they might retard our children. That's our concern. So Minister, sorry. I'll leave it to you.
Thank you, Chairman. It's a very good content. The PNG Education Institute, PNG EI, is training the early childhood teachers. Now, but the, for us, the, the teacher training, you know, another responsibility of the higher education. Higher education, so and the, we, I've been talking about increasing the GPA of students or like would be trainers. Teachers who want to go into teachers qualities. I've been talking about the increasing, directing the sales rate and everyone, we need to raise the GPA. So that people who go, want to be teachers, they have to be very, 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 very highly intelligent people, they go there. And I've also been telling them, telling the students in my, in my engagement with the students, I want you to be, want to be teachers. Not because you can't become teacher when you don't have any other options. Now you must be, when you come through the school system, you must be want to be.
It's a choice.
So these are some of the things, but yes, with the, with the early, early childhood, I think they, we also made a intervention that we said, our teachers, you know, we pay them on the qualification, not on the position they own. So which basically means that someone who's also very good masters degree holder in early childhood education can, or, can go and teach, teach at the early childhood level. So these are some of the things that we've been addressing. Maybe, say, we might want to elaborate further on that.
Thank you. The elementary teachers we had before, the, the community selected them and on different qualifications and we gave them what we call certificate in elementary teacher training set. So it was not done properly. So the minimum standards for the EC now is a diploma. Minimum, maximum is any, any qualification. So but we are setting now the minimum qualification as a diploma. And we, for primary, it's now gone up to a degree qualification from diploma. So we are raising them at this point. So yes, we, we agree that it should be a bachelor degree. But at the moment, we just have taken diploma as the minimum standard. We are expecting from our projections in our next education plan from the number of teachers in 2020, we're expecting about six thousand teachers. And by 2029, we would be expecting close to sixty five thousand. Those were some of the teachers' numbers that we were projected. But the implementation has started late, only this year we've started. But the numbers definitely will increase and it will double the current, or trip note. Today is about seventy and it will double up the numbers by the time we have established early childhood schools in maybe all districts and communities. So those are the numbers we look at and the state, we, we asking the state must take that responsibility. The other parts of the infrastructure, looking after the teachers, welfare and so on, the community has to be responsible. But salary and vehicle cost, so let them state to take ownership on this law. That's what we, Minister is going to cabinet with that.
Secretary, sorry, me, my, my question still stands. Yes, we, we, we developed a program, we'll put teachers on payroll. So now I have early childhood school in my community and I want to send those who are interested to teach to school. So you think I have forty three council ward and in each unit, there will be two or three early childhoods. So you have about eighty early childhood school in a, in a, in a district. So I have to develop, train eighty four or eighty teachers to teach early childhood. So which, which colleges, do we have a diploma program in place for early childhood? And which colleges, which colleges and teachers colleges are providing those early childhood?
Yeah, thank you. University of Goroka was training EC teachers and I think Western Britain sponsored term of the, their students to undertake that program. But the PNGI has been our main training of EC teachers. And they're also engaging the, I think there's an institution up at Pinchafen and Alstberg that's been now moved to Erab. That one will also be training teachers of ECE. We are also negotiating with the Department of Education to make sure that all teachers colleges must provide teacher training for them. But those who have already been trained, there are around four hundred or five hundred, that number already been trained and they're out in the communities teaching ECE. But we have now made it compulsory that those who have gone through training already, they must come back for a refresher course to go into a new curriculum. So they know what we really want in the new curriculum before we give them the registration to teach in ECE. So there are already teachers training programs in place, we just have to scale up and get all the teachers colleges across the country to take on EC. And we also have a, the one program that's been also flagged at the moment, we are going to support. The Christian Wagni College now is teaching only primary or secondary school students. And that institution has requested to be a specialized training for early childhood. So we're going to provide some financial support and they will become also one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. Governor Mutuwal has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman, but let me acknowledge the presence of Minister and Secretary. Let me also thank on behalf of the community. This is the first time we are, I'm seeing a minister attending parliamentary inquiry, so we give credit to you, Minister. Thank you, thank you for your patience. Thank you, thank you. Secretary, I mean, we talk about early childhood education. During my first term, we spent five million kina sending out, you know, all those elementary teachers to go to University of Goroka. We spent five million kina to get them trained for early childhood education. Of course, it's a very expensive measure and, you know, to continue to fund that kind of money is not quite easy. So is there a plan? You know, there are many teachers college in Gaulim Teachers College available, even we established now Kimbe Teachers College and all. But they are not specialized in, you know, giving diploma for early, yeah, early childhood education. That's one. Two, you know, with all that recent issues, like, you know, there are too many, even in my provincial budget, I have three or four early childhood education, each one getting hundred thousand. But to be honest, like I have not visited their facility in Biya Lo or some remote places. Too many people are establishing and is there a regulation or any process where they can obtain a license where? Because, you know, early childhood education is as important as university education in a sense. Because the science says only when the child up to certain age, like seven, maximum eight, ten years old, whatever they grasp, whatever they learn, that stays with them, you know, until they die. So that is why that foundation, I mean, unless the foundation is strong, we can't really build a big building. So early childhood education is, is like a foundation. So what's like the registration and licensing process for that one? Or how rigorous the registration and licensing process for private schools? And is there any plans to tighten, you know, before we simply grant some school permits? And also in terms of inspection and enforcement, does the department have any inspection and compliance unit? Minister and Secretary, there are many private schools are popping up and they are charging, you know, hefty fees. I, I, while I appreciate schools like Karitas, you know, they do really quality education. There are private schools in the name of giving second choices and all those kind of things. But recently you could have seen, you know, the front page report. I'm, I'm so scared, like, you know, we might be setting up a wrong precedent in a way that, okay, they just, I mean, they should stop, advise the parents well before education, not the day when they walked into examination hall to be told that you get out. You know, because I feel that is the breach of fundamental right. Yes, it's your school, okay, they have to pay fees, but you could have, you know, advised them earlier. Or if you didn't, then you should have allowed them to write exam and then hold the certificate until we pay. We do assist many people. We do receive two hundred fifty thousand from government as discretionary fund and our first priority is to pay for any education fees. If had they, they approached like, you know, before their respective district members or, you know, us, these are two thousand kina, three thousand kina fees could have been easily solved. Of course, we expect the parents to pay at least, you know, half or then we can pay the half. But then nobody made any approach and then last minute, the time when the kids walked into examination hall and to be told that, okay, you can't write because you did not pay. That I feel it's a violent, I feel even it's like a criminal offense. So what really, what kind of, you know, inspection and complaints you need, you have for all those private schools? I personally feel they do not have basic facilities. They do not have a conducive learning environment, even to, even they have any qualified teachers, which, you know, how do we, you know, monitor or check? Especially the teachers qualification and the facilities like proper classroom, if there are toilet or, you know, all those things and also accountability.
SOP.
SOP, yeah. Can the department consider a system where private schools must publicly display their registration status and their inspection certificates, similar to, you know, in the health and food industries, they, you know, put all those certificates so that the parents are aware of the basic, you know, requirements the school is meeting? And how can, the, the provincial education secretary, as you rightly said, you have to go and amend the law. We have to support amending the law because sometimes I'm also tired telling the provincial administrator to, you know, make sure the provincial education manager is someone really qualified, someone who is active. Because I feel it is, it's one of the most senior job and tough job, you know, to really manage the entire provincial education. You have thousands and thousands of teachers to handle and many teachers, when we, when I go to like places like Gas Mata, Kendri and remote places, Chairman, many teachers are coming and they are saying they're working for last two years, three years, but they have not received single payment. And we feel sorry and whatever two hundred, three hundred kina I had, you know, just to give it to them. I, I wish like we have so much money on this part, I'll pay them, you know, whatever the salaries. Because teachers need to be treated, you know, with respect. You know, they, it's, it's like one of the most noble job, you know. And, and how do we really address those kind of issues where the teachers are there, but even those went for this early childhood education, the teachers service commission says they have to be again, that they have to issue a certificate. So because they went to UOG and UOG has their own certification, but TSE says no, they have to have a special certificate from TSE. And that's what, you know, some of these teachers were not able to get paid and all those things. That's one side. The other side is truly there are teachers working in remote areas, but they were not paid for whatever reasons, they not registered. I mean, of course, these are in the remote areas, expecting them to come to town. Once they come to town and it takes months for them to return and all those things. So I, I, I would really appreciate as to how we can manage these private schools. You know, so that there is some basic standard and quality and the childrens are not deprived. And this, in these cases, like, you know, we should not be come last minute at our doorstep, say, either you pay this seventy two thousand kina, if not, I will not allow. So what if all other schools will follow the same and then they do the same? And we will be expected to, you know, pay which we unbudgeted for. If thousand, two thousand, five thousand, ten thousand, we can pay discretionary or we can pay personally, no issue. But this is like, you know, seventy, hundred thousand and all, it's too much. So thank you, Secretary.
Minister and Secretary, you know, most BM, early childhood school in Pulapia, who's regulating them? What's the standard? Is there SOP or inspector taking place? Or I think this is the core of the, our committee members, governors, Mutuwal's question. The private school too are, you know, cropping up everywhere. So generally in education, but now for our committee is focused on early childhood. Or beginning of the year. Minister or Secretary, you try and back him.
Okay, let me just say something on this end and maybe the secretary would have a fair clarity to it. This control quality, I gave a minister direction to, to the ministry, not to register new schools. If they don't have all the teachers houses built. Because this is one of the things that I want to do to, you know, to solidar, to improve teachers and employment conditions. So every teacher, every school that want to be registered, or anybody at private school, private in Tabruna want to register a school, must build up all the teachers house first. Then, then we can register that school. So this is what the minister's direction I've given to the secretary and staffs. So the secretary might want to add further.
Thank you. The, we, we have different standards that the teachers must meet or teacher train, teacher train, trainee must meet. They can graduate from an institution, but to become a teacher, they have to be registered by the secretary for education. Once a teacher has been registered by the secretary for education, then, then they go and get admitted into the teaching service commission. That's the process we have for a teacher. For a school to be established, that's a formal school, that's as a primary school. In previous case, it elementary school, secondary school. It's the only authority that approves that school or even a primary, a primary permitted school. The only authority that will approve the school to be established is the secretary for education. Now we have standards that we have had before that had to be met before a school has been registered, but they were quite loose. So we have now, including the minister's direction, we have now, I think I have signed it already or otherwise I will sign this week, new sets of requirements that a school must meet before the school is registered. Including compulsory, having every teacher to a position must have a teacher's house. So we have, we have gone down to be very strict on the standards now. In some cases, like the EC schools, they must meet hundred percent of the requirements. They must have the qualified teachers, hundred percent. They must have the infrastructure, hundred percent. The curriculum, hundred percent. And there are two, two or three other different areas, they must meet hundred percent of the requirements before we will approve for registration. Similarly, for the other levels of the schools. Private schools, your concern is, is noted. We have not been very strict on especially some of the private schools and permitted schools. In the case that Governor you have raised, I, it has alerted us and I've already given instruction to our standards division to go and carry out a special investigation into that school if it has met standards. And if it doesn't, then that school will be deregistered. Or it's a private school, so what we'll do is to withdraw the permitted status approval we've given to that school. The school can operate, but as a private school alone with a different curriculum, not the school curriculum or government curriculum. So that's what will happen. So that investigation will be carried out on that school, on the quality of its services.
Thank you, Secretary.
Sorry, Governor, Chairman, your schools in NCD, the EC schools that you raised, you correct, there are so many EC schools under the house in any kind of environment, so on. These are not regulated yet. They have not met, come into the new EC centers that we have now formally recognizing. There's something one or two that we are piloting and they've met standards, but majority are still operating under the.
Whatever.
Whatever.
Yeah, we've, we've developed a profile of them.
Community development, yes.
We've developed a profile of all of them, so when we get the SOP, then we will get them to lift, lift their standard to meet the SOP. Then you all can register them or kind of similar. Otherwise, you know, we are following your model, which is primary school. We attach them to the primary school and they meet the criteria and we work with the primary school first.
Secretary, well, for, that's for a cities for, for us rule. We have elementary, now you converted them to preschool. No, no, you converted them to preschool. Yeah, elementary, now they converted to preschool. So for EC, it will be a new one or it's part of the preschool?
Let me clarify, let me clarify this one. The one six six, one is for prep. And rates one up to six is the six, grade seven to twelve is the six. ECE is a completely new system. It will have its new teachers, new curriculum, new operating standards, new, new infrastructure standards. So it's a completely new system. It's not elementary. Elementary is now amalgamated with the primary. Primary will drop off seven and eight, which will be part of the secondary. So that's what we call the one six six. So ECE, you are looking at the completely new school system. So it's a two-year program.
Might be two years or it might be one year or it's still one year.
So it will be a new registration?
It's a new registration.
Okay. All right, if there's another question, I have to be conscious of time.
Yes, Chairman, I, Secretary Kombra, before you go, just one question. There are a lot of unregistered teacher training colleges mushrooming all over the place. Offering a.
Thank you.
Early childhood certificates or diplomas. Without the required requisite certification from National Education Board for that college or teacher training college to, do the, to run as a teacher training college. I mean, what is your department doing about in terms of polishing the, what do you do? Because I know of parents that pay huge sums of money, up to about ten, eleven thousand kina to have their children, kids enrolled in these colleges in the hope that after the end of the training, they will be issued a certificate. Recalled by the National Department of Education and perhaps the Teaching Service Commission to go and teach out in the schools in the country.
As Minister saluted too, the function of teacher training colleges have been transferred since twenty nineteen to the Department of High Education.
I'm talking about the unregistered, unregistered teaching colleges.
The registration of all these teachers colleges is now the function of Department of High Education. It's no longer the Department of Education. But the teachers that are trained, they will come to teach in primary schools and high schools. Now, if we find that they have not met the GPA requirement, if they have been trained in an institution that has not been registered, they will not be registered, I can guarantee that. So my minister is speaking with the High Education Minister to find out some of these issues that we have with teaching, issues that we have with high education on issues like teacher quality, teacher quality training, the GPA. The discussions are going on, but we'll have to take it a bit further. But remember, your, your question is a good one, but legally now the registration of teachers colleges is now become the responsibility of high education. My minister, I do not have any authority, but we must ensure that teachers who are trained, they must meet the GPA requirement they want and they must come out of a teachers that, this college that has been approved.
Okay, committee members, Minister and, sorry, Minister, you were going to speak, but let me, I'm just conscious of time. So Minister and Secretary and your team. Minister, apart from what you are going to say, perhaps in the next maybe five minutes or so or less, if you can also address question three. Perhaps you've addressed it briefly in your overview, the brief, but question three is about the transition rate from primary to secondary. The current, on current level, it's about, running about twenty percent. So plenty of beginning, you go to primary school, but time or go to secondary school, let me go down here. So that's a big problem for children, our children, preparing them for the future. So if you can address that and whatever other response you're going to keep, you're going to make and then we might bring our session with you all to a close because it's already past twelve and we need to have everybody have some break, have some lunch and then we will resume. We're supposed to resume at one thirty, yes. Thank you, Minister.
Thank you, Chairman. I think that's a, it's a very important question. I'll just briefly explain how, you know, the reasons why we have people, our students, transition rates from lower grades to higher grades. Some of them probably in the past were due to school fees. Some of them were dropped out because of like law and order problems for many, many reasons. And some of, but the government has made a direct intervention by way of paying school fees for all the students. And the school, the government is paying fees for elementary or early childhood all the way up to grade twelve. So now it's, there's no reason for our students to drop out of school for those reasons. Now, but we're also having discussions amongst ourselves with the secretary. We want to make going to school interest, I mean, like attractive. But just thinking out of the box, we have to make, you know, kids want to go to school. Make it interesting, attractive, so that all the kids must go to school rather than, you know, selling bill nuts on the street.
Some incentive like nutritious lunch or something like that, milk or they do it in other countries. Why can't we do it here in PNG? Yeah, anyway.
That's, that's right. And you are right, you know, committee, I've floated some ideas and one of them is students evaluation. So your funds start build up when you are in early childhood, when you are ready at the end of grade twelve, you get a grade twelve certificate, you get your account and then that's your startup capital to start in life. There's some of the discussions we are having, but maybe the committee can assist us in that, you know, so. It's only to, you know, the, the ideas make the, make the kids, you know, like feel like they want to go to school. Make going to school attractive. Make going to school attractive, so when they go to school, they know that their, their savings or the balance in their account is growing, growing, growing. And then we, we also working on the, uh, what is it, the endowment, education endowment fund. You know, these are the things we are working on in order to make sure that all our kids, uh, feel that they're, you know, excited to, um, want to go to school, rather than we're forcing, our parents forcing, um, kids to go to school. We want the kids to be excited.
Yeah.
Going to school, knowing that any other day, they, they're something, by going to school, their bank, uh, bank account is accumulating, you know, that sort of thing.
Make it, make school attractive, fun, entertaining and learning at the same time.
That's right.
Um, okay, but, uh, Minister and Secretary, yeah, here along most of here, I can just give a example, huh? One of our big impediment is space. Uh, we have about forty-two, forty-three, it's probably gone up, but when I started in two thousand and seven, we have about forty-two, forty-three primary schools. And our secondary school, we, we government, government yet, em no nap. Lucky we have like agencies like Catholic Church and other agency school coming on, so we have about eighteen secondary schools. So taking forty into eighteen, it can't work, fourteen into eighteen. If there was eighteen and it goes to forty-two, maybe it will work, but here we have forty-two into eighteen. So it's not working in the capital city, so this is part of the problem, so, uh. You two can point figures at me, but I'll point figures at you again because I wanted, you know, N C D education to transfer to me, but you two are only me at the staff, so we both of, all three of us are responsible. But I think, you know, the, that aside, I think, uh, space is a problem too, so what's the strategy for? For me, I see in foremost, be the biggest sector where we are going to invest is, is in the secondary school, because it's a space problem. So me thinking like, uh, have you all thought about like, uh, shifting classes? Uh, I, I've flagged before about evening classes, uh. Some, uh, and then we use other facilities like some love church here. Uh, Monday to Friday, and pasta stop nothing here, church them free. We could be conducting some classes there, huh? And then, um, in the evening, like most of our primary school, they close at about two o'clock. So if we have a evening class or afternoon class, another sets of teachers and, uh, students come in from two to seven o'clock or. So mostly, you know, we improve the safety, you know, maybe they can study until, uh, you know, go to class until ten o'clock or nine o'clock and then all go to house, uh, so are you at the, at the, you know, Minister and uh, Secretary level, at the national level, you all thinking about this, how we are going, whether we're going to build more schools or we are going to use existing facility or in order to maybe, maybe space is a big impediment to retention. Apart from school fees or whatever, uh. I think for me, in the city is a big problem, so I'm trying to solve that problem.
Thank you, thank, thank you, uh, Chairman. Uh, there's a number of actions we can take. Uh, one is shift teaching, uh, shift teaching was tried out in, uh, East Britain, Kokopu.
Yeah.
It went on for a number of years, but, um, uh, its context and reasons why it was provided was because of lack of schools. But once they're building up schools, they've, uh, changed that policy in, in, uh, Eastern Britain. Um, there are, there are certain issues that we'll have to address, like security issues, transport issues. Are those the certain issues that we have and they have to be considered collectively uh, by the gov- provincial government, the national government and others to have shift teaching. Uh, one is population itself, the population is the biggest issue. The population is growing, but the institutions and teacher numbers are not increasing, so we have to stop population first or slow down. Uh, that I don't know how to help, but we are really chasing the problem. We're not solving the problem, the problem is there and we're trying to do what we can. But, uh, I think it's a bigger national issue that we need to address is the population. Uh, migration is another issue. Uh, I would suggest the most, uh, in my view, I believe that for N C D, uh, we need to really build more secondary schools, if we want to go, uh, originally, you, you need to build more schools, we need to build more schools in N C D. The other option we have is to remove everything and go up, uh, vertically. In other words, we have to have three, four levels of schools at gardens. So that way you, we have enough classrooms for every student and we can get hundred percent transition from prep all the way to grade twelve. So I think the reality in N, in N C D is we'll have to go vertically. Uh, because you don't have any more land or we don't even have land here in N C D. So I think that's the only option, shift teaching can help, but there are other implications. But the one that we can easily manage and make it possible is, uh, billing.
Going up.
Going up, and that's, that's what I think we could do.
Yeah, going up, but you, yeah, so everybody comes at the same timing, yeah? But perhaps you two could think about it too, just a dialogue between myself and you two, uh, taking advantage of this opportunity. But like, uh, shift is teaching, let's say in Gerewu, uh. We can restrict it, the shift teaching to, uh, students only in Gerewu to come to Chal Slavanga or Gerewu Secondary or whatever, you know, secondary school, that's one. And maybe you all can, uh, promote online teaching or online classes, uh. Some, uh, uh, children who are not, uh, cannot physically come to class, they can, uh, study online, uh. Now they are on TikTok and everything else, so you know, I'm sure they can put time on, you know. And if we improve the cost of, uh, you know, uh, internet costs, reduce it down, then we could afford to get, uh, online teaching, uh. There's online teaching already happening like in maths, in, already in N C D. You don't need to go to, uh, maths class, you just stay at home and there's a, you know, particular private, uh, enterprise, uh, enterprising teacher who teaches on, online, uh. We, we have to examine all these, uh, options in order to fix this retention because, uh, Minister, you and, uh, Secretary has not given us a really clear sort of, uh, explanation of the, you know, the problem with retention from primary and to secondary school. So maybe this is something you two can think about, think about and, uh, give us a retention submission too, so we can reflect on it in our recommendation to Parliament, uh. Any closing remarks you two want to say?
Chairman, I think, um, for the, um, use of technology, yes. We can use technology to, uh, uh, address some of the issues that we are raising now. Like, um, retention and lack of space and, I mean, like, uh, shortage of teachers and all these things. One of the good things that, well, the government was trying to do was, um, Starlink. Uh, then they, you know, for some reason, the Ombudsman Commission stepped in and, uh, put a stop to it. And so I'd like the Secretary, let's, let's be an intervener in this, um, case because our students, it's going to benefit, I mean, uh, have an effect on our provision of education to the, to the children. Now, when our teachers, uh, when we don't have enough teachers, then we can use, um, communications.
Yeah.
Or when we don't have enough, um, you know, classrooms, we can use, um, you know, online teaching. But the, these are some of the things that we are thinking, but then, you know, one of the things. But then, uh, this thing is, um, really frustrating us, but hopefully, um, um, uh, communications, our department team will, and then the Ombudsman Commission will come to a, come to an understanding and, uh, because to us it is really, it would, it would have, if it had taken off, then it would have really, uh, assisted us, assisted us. We're invested in, um, uh, information technology and, uh, we pride out some of the, um, what we wanted, wanted to do and, uh, we are ready, but, you know, just we don't, we don't have the technology now. I mean, the facilities right now.
Thank you, Minister, I think, you know, your point about Starlink is good, but, um, we've got our own, uh, internet compa- company, uh, Dataco. They've been putting fiber optic everywhere, but, uh, the price is still high for some reasons, uh. I can't understand it, Solomon Island, uh, Fiji, Samoa, Vanuatu, they get the same services from Australia, which is free to coming to us, uh, but, um, somehow in P and G, the rates gone up instead of going down, you know, uh, corresponding with our neighboring countries, uh. Even Australia too, they have a big question about why, uh, Data, Data, Dataco still have a ve- very high rate. So that's something, uh, member for, Wa Waria is the chairman of the I C T Parliamentary Committee, so he could take it up and solve that one for us. But, uh, otherwise, I want to thank you, Minister, thank you, you know, very much for respecting our committee and, uh, coming with the Secretary and our team. Uh, it's a good dialogue, uh, but it's only a start. Um, we will get your written submission and Secretary, any more written submission, we will, uh, have a look at it and then we will start to frame the report going to Parliament, but also for follow-up, uh. This is just the beginning of our inquiry as a committee and of course, we want address and solve everything within the time space, but it's just to give us a, a start. So I thank you, Minister, for taking time to come and, uh, Secretary and our team. Uh, your time now, I have to bring it to an end on behalf of the committee, I want to thank you all. We have everyone, ladies and gentlemen, um, it's, uh, now lunch break, we will try to resume at one thirty. But, uh, I'm not sure if we have lunch, but everybody is welcome to share with us whatever lunch is there, yeah? Minister, uh, Secretary, you and your team and everybody else, media, everybody, welcome to have lunch with us. Thank you very much, uh, everyone for this morning session.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right.
Chairman.
No worries.
Can we go for some, this biometric, one for one hour or?
Hmm?
Biometric.
Oh, committee, yeah?
No.
Uh?
The, uh, biometric.
No, you two can go. The main thing, we talk here is, we start.
I will call our inquiry into order. Members of the media, thank you very much everyone for the morning session. One of our committee members have taken leave but the standing orders of the committee is that as long as we start with the quorum, we can still continue. But we still have quorum. The standing order requires us to have a quorum of four. So there are five of us here so we have quorum, we can continue this inquiry. This afternoon we are supposed to have a national civil registry. There are, you know, information or presentation to the committee is important because they are in charge of the registry and certificates of birth and of course other such statistics and registration. It's important that they come and give a, you know, a presentation to the committee because a lot of our children in our country hardly gets registered at birth and it affects their life throughout their life journey. Some don't know their age or have no, no precise idea, idea of their age. They are not recorded anywhere so affects them going to school and continuing education, getting access to a passport and licence and NID. So it's important that for the future our children must all have access to registration. So National Civil Registry is supposed to be here. We have invited the minister, portfolio minister was responsible for this particular office and I think they are they did accept the, they did accept our invitation to come but they are probably caught up in the other meeting that is taking place at Hilton. So just by way of standing orders and procedure, I just want to advise all of us public generally that committee as parliamentary committee, we have, we can invite, you know, departments and different personals working in departments and state agency and perhaps outside of the state agency too, we can invite them to appear voluntarily. But also we have powers to summon witnesses to appear. So I just want to make this known to everyone that if we summon you and you don't appear, then you will be held in contempt of parliament. And that's a semi criminal offence, you can be charged by parliament. So this is clear parliamentary powers that we are exercising. The parliament get its powers from our people so as everybody knows, not everybody can become a member of parliament. It's not possible for 10 million or 12 million or whatever million people to be members of parliament so we have a parliamentary representative system. The people are represented through their elected members. So we are exercising the power of the people expressed through the parliament. They are parliament. So their powers include powers to summon witnesses, summon documents, summon department, provincial government, all state agencies. At this time we have not really exercised that power, we have extended invitation. So I want different government agencies, including National Civil Registry, to understand these powers that we have. We will excuse them for now, hopefully they'll come around this afternoon or tomorrow. But for now we have Mr. Tanda here from the National Department of Planning and Monitoring. So I would like to welcome on behalf of the committee Mr. Tanda. I think he is Deputy Secretary but he will explain his designation in the department. Mr. Tanda has worked in the National Department for planning and monitoring for a long time so he's well vested with mechanics of the national planning. Thank you, Mr. Tanda, for making time. The inquiry is first time we having this special parliamentary committee. I on behalf of the committee alerted everybody to the fact that it's no coincident that parliament this year and this time created this committee. The Special Parliamentary Committee on Children and Youth Wellbeing. It's 50 years of our journey and now we are focusing on the next 50 years. So the parliament is by creating this committee is reminding us that the next 50 years belong to our children. And for our children to have a better quality of life, be able to be more successful, live and transform themselves in our country, we must put effort and energy and attention to their wellbeing now, preparing their foundation. What we do now as leaders and in all levels of government in the community will define their lives and their journey for the next 50 years. So this way we are conducting this inquiry now and it's first time for us to have this inquiry. But I would like to, you know, invite all of us and propose to us that this is a very important committee. In the last 50 years, I think we have done all we can for our children but there's no special focus or attention. We have a focus on infrastructure. Mr. Tanda and your team at the National Planning, infrastructure, health, education generally. We focus on building the economy. We focus on so many other sectors but children, we've taken it for granted that we've got a Department of Education, Department of Health and everything will be alright. And the statistics that are before us clearly shows that we have a lot of problem. And if we don't start addressing them, we will have more problems in the future. Immunisation, vaccinating them from common disease, nutrition is a big problem. Education is still a problem because the retention between primary and secondary is very low. Eighty percent go to primary school but only 20% end up in secondary school. So what's happening to the maybe 60%? And then at tertiary level, we only catering for about 5 to 10% of all the students. So it's get smaller and smaller, it's a pyramid system. At the top is small. So big question that begs all of us is that where all our children going? And it's no wonder we have a lot of social problem in PNG because our children, their life are being wasted, you know, all over the place, no mentorship, no pathway, head doc approach and this type of approach must end. And this is why parliament has made a very strong statement to set up this committee and we are determined to get the focus on, you know, this particular sector so we give our children for the next 50 years a better chance than what we have done in the last 50 years. So with those comments, we will now come to National Department of Planning and Monitoring. Mr. Tanda, thank you. I believe your department was send a copy of questionnaire and perhaps you have been briefed or prepared on this questionnaire this was set out. So if you have an opening or some sort of a general statement or summary to make to the committee, we'll invite you or summary to make to the committee, we'll invite you to make that statement to the committee and then we can have a discussion on questions here and there to get clarity and specific, specific information that we want. The whole idea, Mr. Tanda, is for us to see how your department is focusing on, focused or putting attention to outcomes for our children in all sectors. But I think more particularly for your department, I think we focus on WASH program. So, Mr. Tanda, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. And good afternoon, Honorable Governor and Chairman and all the esteemed members of this high-level parliamentary, special parliamentary committee on, on children and youth. Firstly, I would like to sincerely, I'd like to pass my minister's apologies. My minister did meet with the UNICEF Regional Director this morning and conveyed to hear his strongest commitment and resolve to, to push for the establishment of the National WASH Authority. As you know, the National WASH Authority, WASH bill was done with the support of the World Bank back in 2018. It was still in draft for the last nearly seven years because of obvious sort of overlap between existing legislations. As per the position that Treasury took, they gave us a response in 2023, but the letter didn't reach National Planning. We were given the copies of the letters last week in Mandagin. And we also have access to a similar letter from I triple C on what the new entity would do in terms of the, the regulatory functions in terms of, I think, collecting fees and charges or something like that. The letters are with us, so we are working on it. We have advised the minister and our secretary. The WASH unit is a very small unit of less than 10 people. I was appointed back in 20, sorry, in June this year to add the WASH program. So it's a small, small unit and it has taken that long because, because of lack of clarity and, and understanding in terms of, okay, in terms of like separation of functions between Water PNG was and SOE, what role that Water PNG will play versus the regulatory functions that the new National WASH Authority will play. So because of the, the lack of understanding and, and also sort of the draft legislation being very vague and general, Treasury has rejected it. So Treasury would issue the certificate of pursuant for us to take it through the other processes. Meaning to say that once Treasury issues the certificate of pursuant, we have to take that draft legislation to, to the State Solicitor's Office for them to review it within the context of other existing legislations. So because of the delays in, in the issuance of the certificate of pursuant, it has taken seven years and then, and you know, as a result, based on a report by UNICEF that was produced in August 2022, I think that report is telling us that the cost to the country is about 3% of GDP and in monetary terms, it's exceeding 2.5 billion. So in terms of loss of, when a person gets sick, he does not actively, you know, participate in, in, you know, productively engaging in, in work and other areas. The same goes to, you know, to all the productive, you know, citizens of the country, including, okay, the vulnerable, meaning children, infants, you know, girls during their menstrual periods and, and, and every other, you know, people. Not those that are living in the cities, but beyond the city boundaries, even peripades and then the rural areas that are very, very sort of affected the most. We have a presentation that, if time allows, then we can go through the presentation. The questions, the questions that were, were posed to us in the letter are actually addressed by, addressed in, in the, in the presentation, that's one.
Maybe, Mr. Tanda, you can do a summary of it and then we can examine you and then, and then you can end up the report too, so it forms part of our report to parliament.
That's right. So I think this is our first time appearing in, in the parliamentary committee and we came thinking that it was a normal sort of workshop that we attend. So we came with a presentation, but we will prepare an official report to your committee, Chairman, and then maybe that will help us to, to address some of the issues. But I think in a nutshell, the, in terms of policy, the policy, we've, we've done all of that. The national WASH policy is there, 2015 to 2030. We are now in 2025, so we have another five more years to implement that policy. So one of the key outputs of that policy is the establishment of the National WASH Authority. So there, I've explained it already because of lack of understanding and, and because of, you know, the draft bill itself, it was not like very clear. So that's why it was delayed. But Treasury has given their concurrence that once we go back and review the draft legislation, they will, will issue the certificate of pursuant. So this morning, when we met with UNICEF Regional Director, our minister confirmed that and conveyed his, his commitment to ensuring that the legislation gets tabled next year, middle of the year.
In the meantime, how is this policy being managed and rolled out? And what sort of funding capacity and strategy is being applied to enable the WASH program to become real? Is there a proper sort of a policy approach and strategy or is it like EDOC? Or people just applying to National Planning under PIP to get funds?
That's right.
Roll it out in the district or province or?
So without the chairman, without the National WASH Authority, the funds there were allocated since 2016, '17 half until this year. All of those funds are kept parked under National Planning and it's, it's explained in the presentation, but if I can give a quick summary from 2019, 2019 to 2025, there was 106 million allocated. So 10 million was for, for the WASH, WASH PMU operations and then, and then about 90 million for the development projects. So because there was no entity responsible, the funds were parked under National Planning and, and usually what happens is that when funds are parked under National Planning, every minister, every leader would come and, you know, they bring their submissions, they request funding from the department. So what happens is that funds are paid directly to the districts and provinces for any WASH interventions.
Is there a clear direct criteria and management of it? Like who decides this fund goes to Morova province or goes to Isipico, goes to Milimbeo, goes to a particular district like maybe Alatau district? And who decides the, all this?
So.
And, and the criteria like, what's the criteria that you, you, you can qualify or a district or a province qualify to get access to this 106 million?
That's.
2019 to 2025.
So it's not a consistent funding of a certain amount per year. It was 20 million, for example, 20 million in, 30 million in 2019, got revised back to 18 million. Okay, 2020, 20 million and then, okay, 4 million, 5 million. So it, it, that's an inconsistent level of funding. So basically what happens is that when the leaders, okay, request for that funding, secretary has no choice. Secretary has to, you know, support them. So he can, from time to time, he, he ensures that the WASH unit commits, you know, our technical team to, to support the districts with the district WASH development plans. So we do that and same time for some districts, we give them funding for them to use it with, with their DSIPs to deliver something to the people at the district level. Sometimes our partners come in, especially Water A, World Vision, they come in and they, you know, work with the districts to, to also develop the district WASH plan and, and fund certain projects in some of the, you know, districts that they wish to support them.
So, Mr. Tanda, if I, a member for North West here, we want to apply for, you know, setting up the, let's say, the sanitation system maybe in Anobada village or one of our Motuan villages. How, how would we apply and who will decide if we are entitled to this village or maybe this school, if we are focusing on the children to improve the water accessibility and sanitation, this school will be entitled to this. Who will decide? You will decide or the secretary or the minister or is there a committee or they? And then this committee is guided by some policy criteria or we have to comply with some particular sort of a precondition before we get this money? Or it's just up to now, maybe it's a discretion. It's like a discretionary fund, maybe minister or secretary Conis Samuel will just, on your recommendation, you, because you are in charge of the, this particular program now, on your recommendation, Secretary Conis Samuel could just, okay, me and a member for North West, we can access some funding for. And I'm just putting it in theoretical question, but you don't need to look far to see the needs of our people, especially the children. Here in our capital city, you know, right in our capital city, down there in the Motuan villages, they are really, you know, under stretched in terms of accessing water and then sanitation is very poor. And then we can imagine all our people are in the length and breadth of the country. I think population wise, maybe they are not so concentrated and they're still using maybe traditional method. But in some parts of our country, we are really stretched. So, but up to now, like we in the city don't know about this funding and how to access it and it's like a mystery for us. So I'm not using this opportunity to, you know, barrack or for the city, but I'm just using the city as an example. So could you enlighten us on this? You got, you got criteria or you got committee or it's only a discretion of Secretary Conis Samuel?
Well, let, let me put it this way. When you actually see the cost of delivering one project, the, the cost is so much, Governor. And then, and we, we have a set sort of, you know, process. Meaning to say that we have to help them, okay, align their district plans. Okay, look at whether the, you know, the, whether like for a water supply, we have to know where the water sources are. Okay, likewise sanitation, train them and all of them. So operationally, there are ongoing work that we, we do. But for, for the, for the, the funding that we allocated, like I've said, there was inconsistent sort of, you know, allocation. So when the leaders, you know, ministers especially, when they see that there's funding in there, they, they submit their request and some are ministers, some are, you know. So these are leaders, so what can secretary do?
Yeah, but, Mr. Tanda, if you're, if you're guided by a policy and criteria,
The policy is there, guidelines are there.
Every, all of us will apply.
You can apply.
You all go through a criteria and then you all make addition based on a particular strategy. But now if it's just like ministers getting priority, then no wonder everybody is missing out.
What I'm saying is, according to the policy, there's a 5.4 billion like funding requirement.
Yes.
The policy is costed up to 4.5 billion.
Yes.
So had we established the National WASH Authority, we would have done much. Let me put it that way. We would have done much. I, I don't see that, think that we would have achieved so many things with the 90 million that was allocated. That's really small.
Let me, let me, Governor, sorry. I feel guilty because I also, I saw funding. I benefited from, my district benefited. It's, it's a better off.
You shouldn't be guilty. Your district is entitled to it, but.
So I'll just explain how we, how we.
Yeah.
Governor can understand.
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, so in the national budget, they put funding for WASH.
WASH.
Okay, they put a funding for WASH and whoever district wish to seek funding for WASH, they have to submit a proposal.
Proposal.
PFD.
That's right.
Proposal to the National Planning and then you pursue it through the normal system.
Normal process.
First you have to sign an MOU with the WASH management.
Unit. Yeah.
I think that, that awareness is not, not, not all districts know of that process.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's a, it's a project under the National Planning. That's why they, they want it to be an authority because.
That's right.
It's just a project under, under the National Planning. So you have to dig around to find that.
True.
Find that, find that particular unit. And then you have to do the proposal and source funding. So, so I think, I think it's the, the entities, it's just a DVC or SDC.
A unit, small unit.
Unit under the National Planning. So what they, what I want is if they come out and be on their own, then you will be able to.
That's right.
So.
Better manage.
Better manage the projects and all, all this. I think that's, that's the point. So some of us who were able to find it, we were able to source funding from them and sign the MOU and source funding from them. But so all good, but this is a major sort of a policy intervention.
That's right.
But it seems not to be taken seriously by the department. So it's a managerial, but maybe my question, I can push, pose it this way, Mr. Tanda.
Yes.
Why can't that project be transferred to Water PNG? Why should it be in the, you know, why we have set up another organization called, what is it? A National Water Authority. We have Water PNG. So just give them the, you know, the responsibility and they will manage it. So everybody will know and we can start rolling it. We know the criteria, we know the policy metrics and we all can start bidding for it. So we can start rolling it out in the length and breadth of the country. Uh I think for our committee, the significance is that uh the children without clean water, without good sanitation, it affects their health and, you know, life journey, you know, get affected or get, you know, retarded in the beginning. So they don't learn well, they don't grow well. So all this add together to hold back the potential of our our children. This is the point I am trying to emphasize in this dialogue with you.
That's right, uh Chairman, if, okay, we 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 know the it's it's fair that twenty sixteen Water and Sanitation Act, Water PNG is responsible for water supply and sanitation program at the provincial capital, like, okay, all the major cities, even centers and even the districts. But then the problem is this, okay, when they try to apply for funding, uh apply for funding, meaning to say that, okay, if every project will, the cost of it, delivering a was project, water supply and sanitation project in one district, cost blamed by a big plan, say ten million, fifteen million. They don't have that kind of money. Planning cannot, that's not the whole the money to give them. So the best way that we can be able to, you know, solicit that money is from our partners and our good partners like World Bank, ADB, they want to support us. But the problem then again is the own lending arrangement with Treasury. Okay, Treasury is a policy of, there's a own lending arrangement where when when one SOE tries to borrow, like Water PNG, to do a district water supply project, okay, Treasury will tell them that you use your balance sheet to borrow. You can't just borrow, you know, some funding. We can't approve it, we can't, we can't allow you to borrow unless you use your balance sheet. So Water PNG is saying that we don't have the, you know, capacities. We our balance sheet is not good. We are maintaining that districts, some provincial capital, they are not profit making, you know, operations are. So they are, they they are taking care of it on a community services obligation basis. So what they are saying is, so in that in that sense, they are constrained. So that's why we have to now separate the two functions, utilities goal of Water PNG and then regulation come on National Water Authority. So National Water Authority can help them, step in and help them, working with our good partners to deliver some of those services at the district, what we are doing. So that's that's uh that's that's in line with 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 the mandate. So that's why we have to review the current draft legislation and then come up with a legislation that we separate the utility side of things, give it to Water PNG and then we take up the regulatory, like National Airport Corporation, Energy Authority. Through National Airport Corporations, we've delivered twenty-two airports. Okay, with the National Water Authority, we can deliver some districts complete package water supply and sanitation program. So our partners will be willing to support us. One way to to do some, to maybe to reverse and to to, you know, meet the policy targets, that's the that's the objective of, you know, quickly having to establish the National Water Authority.
So, okay, Mister Tanda, have you, just on wash, have you all worked out the water and sanitation needs of the entire country? And secondly, is their budget costing, costing to the entire, um you know, water and sanitation needs of the country? Uh is is there such analysis and such study? And if not, why not? Uh because water and sanitation are fundamental, basic needs. They have a big impact on quality of life, adults, but you know, more particularly for our committee or children. Um and so I'm trying to, you know, make the connection here too that um to what extent does your department, um as the planning, your principal planning department uh attached to water and sanitation in PNG? Do you you, you know, how, uh is it a big priority? Or is it something you all just offload to Water PNG and say, this is Water PNG's responsibility, you sort out the water uh utility needs of the country and we'll just deal with this wash or something like that? Can you give us a, you know, take on your department sort of on water and sanitation for the country?
Thank you, Chair. Uh we we already doing that. We've been conducting regional workshops, three regional workshops already, Haken, Lee and and Rabaul. And tomorrow, we are conducting the uh national work, stakeholder consultation workshops with with our development partners and all the key stakeholders, like Water PNG, Treasury and everyone. So what we are doing now is first is to relook at the draft legislation. So we will be, Minister has made a commitment to request World Bank to to provide some technical legal experts to help us to quickly look at that draft, working alongside lawyers from from the state solicitors office. So we've done that in the past national planning. We've amended the the uh the PPP legislation in twen- twenty twelve in which I took lead. So I think we will, we will do that very immediately uh from after the workshop. From next week, we will deliver the letters to World Bank and and EU. EU has already prepared the 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 uh documents to establish the National Water Authority. The documents are there, the organizational, you know, structure, the the uh procurement plan, everything. The documents were prepared back in twenty seventeen, eighteen. We will review it, okay, one more time within the context of the review of the legislation. We'll do that and then, okay, I come to the third point, which exactly is what you have stated, Chairman, and and that's precisely what we will do. We will request DFET to assist us with with, you know, funding an engineering firm who will visit the districts to to assess the kind of services that are available at the district level. So it will be a long task, but at least, you know, we get headcount of how much what's available at the district level. And then, okay, that kind of was project that can be delivered at the district level and some costing. So the costing
Have you, Mister Tanda, have you all approached all the provincial government or the local level government? They might have all this, um, you know, type of data or
Yes.
Information already ready, they can just submit you. So like each of the provinces, they probably have done an analysis already and costing of the entire water and sanitation needs.
Yep.
Uh generally, but also specifically like, for example, to the schools. Have done you in the analysis, how water will be sort of excess, whether by the river or some far away, remote islands, they get it from the rain or something like that. Or there's some new technology coming up, like you could convert the vapor, you know, immediately to into water, you know, fast track the water cycle process. Some of these things are going on, so maybe the provinces already have. So if if you all uh sort of work with the provinces and if so, to what extent? Or now you all are just inventing the wheel now or something, it seems.
Let me answer Governor's question. Uh Governor, sorry, uh my Chairman, I'm involved with the PMU unit, so I think I have some understanding, your question is valid. Uh what what the unit is doing is uh it has to conduct the baseline survey and it is a it is an application, software application and and water. So what it does is it goes and collect the baseline survey, it does did it for my district. So you collect the baseline survey and you know what sort of water source you're gonna use, how many population in a district that need water supply. So that particular unit have all the tools necessary to do that. So there is a dashboard where you see the children's affected, like nearly all the
It's called women.
Yeah, women and children will be affected using the, I mean, our our concern is where the children. So that particular survey, a baseline survey is done on all every district. I think now you guys covered fifteen districts so far? Nineteen districts, yeah, so baseline survey in nineteen district. So that that is some of the work that this project management unit is doing.
Yes.
And now you want to, the idea is to come up with an regulatory authority. But my concern is uh because what what's your role as a project management unit at the wash under the national planning? You're doing, you're doing a good job of uh doing the baseline survey and doing actually assisting, implementing the project. That will that particular role be lost in when you go into National Wash Authority? Because we know that Water PNG is based only on declared towns.
Yes.
No, it won't go to, it won't go to, will it's like uh, like, for example, a rural district. It won't based in rural districts. It will only based on declared towns. But the ones that will run on the rural district, which agency will be looking after? Is it the National Wash Authority or there'll be, you will you have the only the regulatory role or you will also play the implementation role, like in terms of planning, design and costing and all this?
So uh I I
So that so that National National Wash Agency Authority, that's that's the authorities like regulatory and you might lose some of your functions and so that's that's a worry for me now.
So Chairman, I'll introduce my two officers here. This is Benjamin Keap and this is John Nokue. Uh they they are my uh policy and planning officers. Uh they will, they will uh support me in some of the the responses that we have to provide. But uh coming back to 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 the question, the National Wash Authority will not lose our, you know, those functions. We will continue to play, but then we have to be established to to, you know, mobilize the support that is needed. We can only concentrate on or we can only, you know, focus on utilizing funding that is provided by the government. We have partners to come in and support, UNICEF, head of UNICEF, you know, is is right here and other, you know, partners. We have the civil society, World Vision, you know, Wari Aid and and then couple of others that are helping us. So once we establish, we will mobilize that. We will do the regulatory resource mobilization and then we will do the policy implementation. We will be the ones responsible for supporting, you know, national planning and and the government to to monitor and implement, like SDG six, for example. And then and 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 uh, you know, that talks about water and sanitation. So we will report back. So that does not get, you know, lost in the process.
Thank you, Mister Tanda. Committee members, any more question on wash or we have other questions that uh need to be elicited?
Secretary of Department of Community Development who was here. And they were asked on some questions regarding uh setting up of the National Child Welfare Council and uh rolling out some projects under the ministry in relation to advancing and promoting the interest of our children. And one of the constraints they said was, when I asked the secretary, I think he said they're funding constraints. The director specifically mentioned something about launching some of PIP applications with the Department of National Planning. Are you able to confirm with me whether, I don't know if you have any records we do right now, but maybe at the top of your mind, the level of funding that the Department of National Planning has given to both the Office of the Director of Child Welfare and the Department of uh Community Development for programs specifically to do with uh addressing uh issues concerning our children. That's they were not able to roll out some of their projects because of, I asked them what was the, some of the reasons and they say funding constraints. They were not assisted by the Department of Finance and National Planning to roll out some of the projects that were in the budget submissions, I didn't put it to. So perhaps you can shed some light?
Thank you. The resource envelope, as we know, uh is 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 that usually when we prepare the budget, the operational budget gets the priorities, first, you know, take uh and then the development budget, public investment program. So usually what happens is the government prioritize, priorities dictate, like Connect PNG, for example. We have a six hundred to seven hundred million per year program and then the others. So we, the department does, you know, prepare a proper budget. So usually what happens is, and I can recall, uh they were not given funding for this year, but last couple of years, we have have been giving child welfare funding yearly, five million yearly. And then I I I know it. So we we used to give them money. And for Department for Community Development, I think they are given thirty to forty million. For DCDC centers, uh uh project for for a a couple of projects that they are running, they are given. So usually between thirty and and then forty million in a year. And and like I've said, you know, because of, you know, priorities elsewhere, major, you know, high impact projects elsewhere. Uh usually when it comes to the final stages of fundraising the budget, they are, sometimes there can be some cuts or reductions. But usually the government priorities remain and 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 unfortunately, they didn't get any support for this year. Uh that I I I didn't know, but we will, I will go and and make sure that they they get some funding. I I will, I will, I will personally submit a brief to secretary to ensure that, you know, child welfare is given some money. But for community development, I think, I think they can, they get some good funding.
Correct to say that advancing child welfare in public is another priority.
That's right.
Thank you.
That's right.
Connect is a very important priority for the government.
Sure, sure.
If Mister Tanda and your officers, I think the the information or presentation given to us by the Director of Child Welfare, Office of Child Welfare and also Secretary Obase is that um since the Lookout in Picking the Act was passed in twenty fifteen, up to now, they cannot even set up the uh
The council.
Council, the National
Child Welfare
Child Welfare and Family
Services.
Uh?
National Family Services.
Yeah, National Child and Family Services Council. So they couldn't get that, you know, set up at the national level. Eleven, ten years after the act's passed, never mind the provincial council, the requirement of the law says provincial council and also the district council. So in ten years, nothing has happened. So part of the, they have a lot of explanation, some differences among the director and the secretary, they don't work together, people running their own show or not running whatever they're supposed to do. They have not communicated with the uh provincial government in the district level or LLG or DDA. So nothing's happened, you know, really tangibly in the in the in this ten years. So that's not a good sort of a record for government. Um but the, you know, presentation is that um they're not given priority generally as a department, but most specifically in this Office of
Child Welfare.
And Family Services, yeah. Yeah, Child and Family Services, huh?
We take note of that.
It's a new office and they don't, they don't seems to get the priority.
Okay, okay.
So this is where this question from our committee member and member for um Karamoysoltenamane is coming from.
Okay, okay.
Um the parliament now has made addition that we must focus now on children, uh give more attention to children, their, you know, health, their nutrition, immunization, education. So we give them a better start for the next fifty years of our country. So could we impress on you all to take that seriously into consideration? It will be one of our strong recommendations to parliament. Um alright, perhaps uh you can, Mister Tanda, try to address. The other aspect of the other questions uh that you have. You have a written report there, but um. Like if you can give a summary on it and then you can end in your report and um. We, it will form form part of our finding and recommendation and of course, we will follow up in future, so. And question one is about the Wash, huh? Sorry, question one is about how the medium term development policy. Number five four. Is operationalized to ensure child welfare becomes a cross-sectional and measurable national priority. Um question two is. Uh about Wash. To address delays in the finalization or implementation of the key child fo- focused policy, including the early childhood. Education Implementation Plan, the village uh health assistant policy and the Wash Authority framework. Uh perhaps just on those, that question, Mister Tanda and your officers, uh Benjamin and John. John, I don't then get your sending properly. Mister Keap and.
Mister Keap and Nokwe.
Perhaps you all can uh address us on that. Um. What is the department's take or on early childhood? We've got the minister and the Secretary of Education come. They still have some problems with uh rolling out early childhood. The village health assistant policy too um still got a lot of delay. And now we have Wash Authority in seven years and we have not set up the authority yet, so. A lot of procrastination or lack of progress in key sectors that will ever bearing on the life of our children. Uh can you like respond to that? The, I I know you have explained generally generally the framework of the budget, huh? What is it? Operational and development in that order, huh? Have have all these initiatives come before you all and if so, how have you all addressed them?
So u- u- usually, Chairman, uh what happens is when we, okay. The first process is to get the overarching uh.
Policy framework.
Policy framework done. That's the medium term development uh plan. And then we we work with the sector agencies to formulate the respective sector plans, sectoral plans, which are aligned to the M T D P. And then we fund it through the public investment program, okay? There every agency is given operational funding by Treasury, National Planning gives the uh P I P funding. And then also our partners come in. They 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 support the government by, you know, we we capture their program in the budget. So they are projects with every other government agency, like, you know, Australia, UNICEF, World Bank. So while government budget is very minimal, small, tiny, you know, we we expect. You know, the agencies to be like, you know, collaborating. Education should be working with health, with National Planning. Every other agency should be working towards a common goal, you know? And and many a times, you know, uh I'm 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 not speaking for everyone, but I see that. You know, Papua New Guinea National, you know, agencies are working in isolation of each other. So one like education department could be working on, you know, on their own, you know? And likewise, health and and community development and everyone, unless everyone came together and and had a. Sectoral committee to do it, maybe child welfare or something that, you know.
Uh so Mister Mister Tanda, that's a good point, so, but it comes back to you all. Your department.
That's right, yeah.
Planning, monitoring, evaluation, huh? So perhaps you can, you know, relate to us like. What are the tools or mechanism that you all have at National Planning to have oversight over this inter-agency? Uh responsibility or task.
So. U- u- usually.
Is uh National Planning coordinating with health and education to make sure they are cooperating together or community? Community development and then community development has set up all these autonomous office.
That's right.
Welfare and then disability or something on one side and then maybe youth uh youth develop authority on one side. Everybody is having, you know, small, you know. Yeah. Peep doms or whatever here and there. Who is oversight? And then it comes back to you all.
That's right, that's right, Chairman. So, you know, what happens is, planning secretary cannot force somebody to, you know. Run that. It it's the, the the onus is on on the departmental head to, you know, facilitate. And planning goes and sits in there. All of us participate. There are project steering committees, there are sector committees, there are operational, there are working. But you you know, like I've said, it's 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 the the onus is on on the respective departmental heads. To 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 coordinate to, you know, so whether they.
You all have no tools or it's not, you all don't have legal power to get everybody to alignment or?
We don't have that. National Planning Act was passed in twenty uh fifteen sixteen. But it was never gaseted until twenty twenty four last year. And, yeah, so we didn't get a gasettle. And so eh 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 is this, at this, you know, stage, we we do do not have the teeth to bite kind of thing.
Okay, Mister Tanda, now, you know, Prime Minister set up another.
N M A, we, authority.
Monit- National Monitoring Authority, so how is this all reconciling with your principal responsibilities? National planning, monitoring and evaluation.
Exactly.
Monitoring and coordinate everybody or another agency coming up and everybody is breaking up into so many small peep doms here and there. And so now we have a problem, the secretary coming here and saying that it's the responsibility of the director.
Yeah.
Director has not worked in eleven, ten years and secretary has no power to bring the director into alignment. So you may fall all get a now, yeah. This is the story of the last uh fifty years. How are we going to have this continuing to the next fifty years or? And then who will be the victim? All Pekingin people, you mean, yeah?
True.
So this is why we are bringing you all to account, so you are the principal agency in the entire framework of the entire nation. And if you all go and come now, hey, you may all get a foul now, yeah?
That's right, so Chairman.
Yeah.
Now that uh the Act, National Planning Act has been gaseted in twenty twenty four, do you now have the teeth? And and just one more question, like, you know, there is more than thirty nine million US dollar loan out of which, like, from World Bank. You know, fourteen million is a grant.
Hmm.
It's been sitting in treasury for twelve months. This is from Water P N G M P, because I've been begging some water project, you know. And we are even funding them feasibility and all those things. Uh of course, I'm not smart enough as our member of our area to. Put the appropriate letter and word to, you know, get the two million.
Network.
You know, and then.
Network.
But you know, the World Bank project has been going on for, you know, last seven years, but nothing really, you know, and this same program. That thirty nine million US dollar and all, but nothing really expanded. But money, you know, is in treasury or approved and all those things. So what what are the mechanisms you will be or procedures you will do to get all this funding? Because fourteen million grand is a very big money. It's like more than fifty million kina.
That's right.
Or sixty million kina, this is.
So let me explain, uh thank you, Governor. Uh there are two two procurement processes. One is the N P C, National Procurement Process, that deals with all the public, you know, procurement. The other one is the K C H Act that deals with all the S O E projects. And the project that you are talking about is under K C H, under P P N G power, uh P Water P N G, but. Ultimately, it falls under K C H. So the K C H Act, uh there's a K C H Act. Uh that that uh it that that calls for all the uh projects to be approved by. Uh the participating participating S O E board and then it goes to the K C H board. And then eventually it goes to the minister. So because of all the like bureaucratic legislative. Political issues, things have been delayed and 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 I I'm I'm aware of what you are talking about. So some things are beyond our control. It it comes back to politics.
I have some questions to ask. Okay, thank you, uh Mister Tanda. My my first question is, uh so the National Monitoring Act was just recently, agency just recently formed. Yours was two thousand fourteen, you were pushing for the National Wash Authority.
Twenty fifteen.
So what, since two thousand twenty, so what do you need uh from? So what's keeping you from, uh your minister is not bringing the Wash bill to the parliament? Uh have you pursued with your minister before coming to this committee?
Minister is fully briefed. Uh it it it's not my minister's doing. It 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 was uh done in the past and then uh and and uh it's 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 a procedural, it's a bureaucratic. Process delay, nothing to do with uh, you know, uh leadership from the political level. My minister would have, he 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 has in fact given his.
So which the bureaucracy, bureaucracy delay, where where is it delayed?
Treasury and I triple C.
I triple C?
I triple C and a Treasury.
Okay, may maybe because you want to use it as authoritative, so all the authorities are collecting fees and all this, so are you gonna collect fees?
Well, we will, I don't know.
Why why should you collect fees? Because you are gonna deal with the, Water P N G is gonna collect the fees. I don't see why National Wash Authority should collect fees. For what purpose?
Regulation is water, okay, water, we have to manage the water sources. Uh in in Papua New Guinea, you know, water sources are not on state land, it's on customary land. So we have to, there there must be an agency established to manage all of that, you know, the sensitivity around land ownership and. Water usage and ownership, that's something that, so we are a national authority, we will not be seen as Water P N G. Having all the money, but, you know, bags and all of that. We will, we are regulator, trying to work with the communities to help us, to help them. That's the message.
So I triple C has to understand that.
I triple C has to understand that. So they have to relinquish their functions back to the new entity.
Okay.
In 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 anything relating to water, water and sanitation.
Okay, good. So we we, you want, what do you want the committee to do? Make a recommendation to I triple C to?
No, the committee.
Or to Parliament?
Committee consists, you know, consists of certain ministers, Minister for Health, Education, Community Development, so. And then, yeah, your your committee, so.
My committee, there is no ministers in my committee.
Uh there there are, there there are members, sometimes I thought there were some members that that uh also participate, so if.
The stakeholders, yes.
Through Chairman, if Chairman can push at that level to 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 maybe, you know, inform Parliament to have that. Uh, you know, bail pass into law.
Okay, we will, this committee will, Chairman, Chairman is the chairman of Child, Children and Youth Welfare Committee. So even the committee will be interested if this National Wash Authority has something to do with the children.
That's right, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so uh when it's, because we, normally a committee normally discuss when when uh. We only discuss on existing policies, on existing legislation. If it's not working, we, you you bring in committee to discuss on this one. But now you are, you are proposing a new legislation, new entity, which is not working already. It's not established already, so. I know one place area where people also committee by, committee by one of my. People can support it, but not as a role as a committee, because we will only, the role of the committee is to see the one on one issue stuff, we're gonna fix it, huh? That's Chairman, through you, Minnesota, but I think the role of a committee, any parliamentary committee is to look, look at existing legislation and existing policies. And find out where it's wrong and then we try to propose changes. So maybe look at your P M U. P M U delivery of the P M U can be better developed to serve the children, huh? If you come at the, make your submission at the, at the, at the proposal based on our questions. Question, people lining go down and you walk in, proposal blue or submission based on a proposal where it will come and address the agendas that committee is looking at. Which is the children. So one pla, one pla case in point is, I think the health. Uh Department of Health were looking into which is the, uh they want to serve the eighty percent of the. Ten, ninety percent of the population is like those who are already well, not sickly. Ten percent are sick, but ninety percent is not sick, so that's what be preventative health, which was is an important component.
Yes.
Of the preventative health. So you, in here, we have something about uh healthy island concept.
Healthy island, yes.
Would it be something that, what is your, are you doing something on healthy, healthy island concept? In line with the Department of Health or you you were having some discussion with Department of Health? To discuss about healthy island concept in relation to Wash?
Okay, I'll let my uh two technical officers, maybe Benjamin to help me in.
S P M U, S P M U, not as National Wash Authority, but S P M U. If you have any discussion with Department of Health with relation to healthy island concept. Because it's a, it's it's at the start of online, let's say, where the children are.
Uh thank you, uh thank you, Chair, I thank you, committee members, uh thank you for the question. Actually, yes, we have been working in close partnership with all our key stakeholders. And especially our uh government agencies like N D O H and N D O E. And under the program, uh program under National Department of Health, we have the Healthy Island Program, Concept Program. And it was, it has a good history in terms of making communities a bit more safer and healthy. And Engonofi District, uh around Goroka, I mean Eastern Island Province is a classical testament of some of the work that was done on the Healthy Island. And Healthy Island is a program of the government and I believe if there was a health rep here, he should. They should give us more clearly on the funding and all this, but we've seen that there are a lot of programs that are coming in. Uh into the country, especially in terms of software component, where capacity building and triggering and. Uh we have tools like C L Ts and Fast and all these. These are some tools that are coming in, but. We have to pack these tools on the certain uh programs that the government runs. And we found out that Healthy Island Program is one of the most important program that the government has, where these tools can ride on that. So that at least we can.
These tools coming through National Planning or through?
These are tools that are coming in from uh key stakeholders where we've tried, like, they've done Wash in. Uh implemented in some other countries like India, Bangladesh, and they've seen it working there. And those models are being incorporated and tried out in the country and we've seen that it's been working because it's more of a triggering the behavior and the mindset. Of the people in the communities so that they take ownership and live a healthy lifestyle. And it's part, it's it's also in line with the Healthy Island Concept that we are, the government has, so. At least these tools has to come in line with the government's program and ride on the government program. So we are working in close consultations with Department of Health to ensure that this program is empowered. So that we continue to partner, so that any awareness activity, any uh district community packaging in terms of rollout of. Awareness campaigns and healthy lifestyle living and all this should ride in the existing government program so that now we know. Which indicators we are taking off and what we are actually achieving, rather than letting them uh. Go into communities without any coordination, proper coordination government programs. That's where we have iso- uh programs working in silos and we don't achieve a good tangible outcomes. But Healthy Island is a good model that we are currently partnering with Health to promote also Wash in the communities.
So is there a project where you, uh P Wash, P M U, you need under National Planning and Department of Health working together? It to implement, is is their particular project, they work together, Department of Health and National Planning?
Yes, we've worked together with some, in some programs like in WeWork. Uh P A J has taken the lead in terms of providing the leadership in coordinating. Uh Wash intervention in WeWork and one of them is through the Healthy Island Model. They've also reached out to trigger some of the communities in the district and P A, in the district and P A J is. Also making sure that it continues, the sustainability of all these interventions continues. So at least we pack these programs under set, existing government programs so that when project finishes, at least there is continuity. Because it's under the government program and funding is continuously allowed. So that when project finishes, at least there is continuity because it's under the government program and funding is continuously allocated. So.
So you, you provide funding to WeWork, the PHA to roll out their wash in the, uh, healthy island concept? In the wash, in the healthy island concept?
Healthy, healthy island concept is under health program.
Okay.
And it's part of the health funding.
How, how did you guys partner with them?
Uh, it's just to, it's just to understand, uh, the entry point in which the different, uh, interventions are coming in, like for example, the CLTS.
What's a CLTS?
Community-led total sanitation. And then there's this FAST and some of the other, uh, new innovative ways of addressing, uh, issues of health in the communities are coming on board. So our best approach is to see how best we can, uh, address this or look at these interventions and pack it under certain government existing programs. Because, uh, when the project phases out in the communities, at least we have the government program to continue to sustain within the government system. And healthy island is the one that we are partnering. So in other words, uh, in terms of community health promotion, the arness of the task is with NDOH to continue to partner and deliver.
So, no, so, so I'm, I'm, my concern is, uh, so you, you're calling for now going to the new, new entity you are doing. So these are important relationship you establish with, uh, Department of Health to implement the healthy island concept at a, will it's at a community level. So when your role, new role taken as a national wash authority, will that relationship continue?
We will have all of that into operation.
You'll continue to support your president?
Yep.
I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, I think, uh, Mr. Tanda should, should respond, uh, your, uh, PMU should respond to those questions.
Yep.
And justify why, how you can answer those questions using the National Wash Authority. That would be, that would make a bit.
Okay, okay.
Sense.
Yes, uh, Mr. Tanda and your, your officers, we are pressed for time. So would you, are you able to give a summary in terms of all the other questions that are, um, have been forwarded to you and you prepared for? Would you end up that, uh, report? And we will accept it as part of our.
Tanda, can you please share your number?
Yes, yes, uh, my.
Share his email.
My number is, uh, email address, uh, at the end of the PowerPoint presentation. It's there. So basically, maybe in, uh, in conclusion, what we are doing is, it's, it's termed as National Wash Authority. So, you know, as I've stated, uh, it will not be, we will do the regulatory aspects or functions. But most importantly, it's to help the government to implement the national wash policy. We are trying to come up with a ten-year national wash sector master plan. There will include all, like I've said, all the projects. And we will, we will, we will soon be consulting the districts, provincial governments, and then consulting the districts in terms of what's available and what's not available. Some districts are quite new and, uh, they may, they will be starting from scratches. So we have to work with, you know, that political leaders, we will work with the DDA's, the provincial governments to help us. While we, we, uh, engage, uh, an engineering firm funded by the Fed to support us to do an assessment on what's available, what's not available. It's a ten-year plan, ten-year plan, twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-five. So that will be implemented by the National Wash Authority.
Okay, Mr. Tanda, you have explained that sufficiently already. What I am, uh, inviting you to do is that you see the other questions, three, four, five and six. We have not, uh, addressed them as yet. So, uh, would you, can you, uh, give us a brief on, in terms of all those questions? Or perhaps you will just end up that, uh, brief, uh, report that you have as part of your presentation and then you will take it from there.
So chairman, uh, uh, maybe for that time being, we were not given this. We, we were not aware of this. So we, we did a present, a presentation based on that letter that we got, the invitation letter. So the presentation is there. So what we will do, my team and I will go back. We will prepare, uh, uh, a more proper report. Uh, and then, uh, finish to your office. So maybe that will help you.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Tenda. I think if I could summarize for all of us, the, our concern here, which should be the concern of your department.
That's right.
Which is a, a principal department in our country, having oversight over all aspects of development and, um, you know, all the issues facing our country. Um, our concern in the area of children, we have a big concern with, uh, uh, immunization program rolling out. Immunization is important to protect our children from all different types of virus that are, you know, they are preventable. We can prevent them from being infected by this virus. Uh, the rollout in some sectors, some viruses, uh, some immunization program is good, some are not so good. Some provinces, uh, you know, uh, only a few are above sixty to eighty. Small exceptional above ninety. A lot is between, uh, thirty to forty. So that's a big area of concern. Uh, and, um, nutrition, nutrition is a big problem that is contributing to, um, poor physical development and poor mental development. Children are getting, not getting good nutritious food. And it's affecting their, you know, our life greatly, especially not able to learn properly. Physically, people are get, uh, children are getting stunned. Now, um, it's expressed already in Parliament, I want to, uh, this time acknowledge of later, Governor of, uh, Moro Bay, later, Luther Wenge keeps reminding us about stunned. We are becoming dwarfs instead of like our ancestors and grandparents and parents. They were almost like giant.
True.
Now we cannot play rugby anymore and it's not rocket science. It just comes down to poor nutrition. Um, we have issues also, also with, uh, civil registry. I have expressed that already. Uh, children are not being registered at birth. And it affects their entire life journey in terms of being, uh, uh, visible and able to get access to, uh, things like, um, passport and N N I D and, um, license and so on. Opening up big accounts affect them. Uh, we have, uh, issues also with, um, violence and child abuse. There's high level of child abuse, neglect taking place. Parents, uh, and men especially, they are having children unplanned. Uh, a lot, some men are now having children like, uh, trophies. Uh, me got plenty Marina, me got plenty Piglinina, me mania. There's, there's no planning. So this, uh, going to contribute to poor outcome. Uh, families who have no plan for the children, they're not going to sustain them, support them or mentor them or help them to have a good start in life. And of course, it's going to, you know, fail their life and the entire country. Um, and we all equally have a problem with, um, uh, teenage pregnancy, uh, affecting the mother and affecting the children as well. So a lot of issues too, um, maternal mortality is still high, infant mortality is still high. Uh, these are, um, indicators that, uh, should worry all of us. And especially for you all at the national planning, having oversight of all the different types of issues, social, economic and, you know, you name it, uh, it should be a core part of your business. So the departments of, we, we, we have, um, come before committee this morning. Uh, some of them are not doing very well.
True.
They need assistance both in terms of planning, having oversight, sorting out some of their, you know, institutional problems, but also coming to funding and priority. Um, we need to, you know, understand that the measure for the nation is not just in the GDP, but converting this GDP to social and infrastructure outcome.
True.
If we are just a building economy, we say our economy is growing to two hundred billion, uh, maybe three hundred billion, but life of our people is, you know, really low quality. It does, does not correspond to this growth, then this economic growth is useless, meaningless to us. Now we are getting funds too from IMF and it's going into the budget. I keep criticizing the, the treasurer. We are putting the, uh, IMF loans into the recurrent budget.
True.
How are we monitoring it? And we are saying that it's a success. But for me, as the governor to in the city, I look around everywhere. We, we are building a lot of infrastructure, but the life of our people and children in particular too are lagging, lagging behind. It is not consummate or correspond with the economic growth that we are boasting about. So there must be, it must correspond.
True.
Economic growth must correspond, social progress, to infrastructure progress, to quality of life progress, to, you know, lifting the standard of living and life of our people. In the city too, people don't have houses and then they don't have water and sanitation. Uh, so our concern now is to set, set spotlight on the children. And Parliament has spoken, so they've, they've, uh, set up this committee. So it's our responsibility to get all of us to start putting priority now on our children. Fifty years ago, we give priority to everything else except the children. That's how we are seeing things now. In education, the, um, primary enrollment is about eighty-six percent. But when they migrate to, uh, secondary school, only twenty percent are going to secondary school. So that should be a concern for you all is planning, uh. All our concern, but, uh, you all as the oversight department, uh, planning like national budget. It should be your priority too. So please, uh, if, uh, you all did not get the question, um, maybe it's our fault. We, I apologize on behalf of the committee and our technical team. Uh, but now you have the question, so please, uh, you all go and, uh, give us a detailed response so that we can form it as part of our recommendation to Parliament. Uh, we are here to support you all and help you all.
Yes.
Clear the way, find, find solution.
True.
So with that, perhaps, uh, members of the committee, unless anybody has a pressing question, I'm, I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Tanda and his two officers to, uh, excuse themselves.
No, chairman, just to, just to stress the role of the committee and, uh, when you provide your response, we would like to, like, these are one to six questions which relate, uh, relates to, if you, if you have the, it's related to child.
Child welfare.
Child well-being. Okay, so, I mean, so you, you provide a response. According to how, if was authority in place, how would you? You, you would, you, you would answer that question in that line, uh, in that view. So that will, uh, that will, that will really help us. So we know that if, wow, so the committee will know that if was authority is in place, then these are the, these are the responses, how you're gonna help, uh, the welfare of children at the community level, at the, at the world level or at the, you know, those, those are the. So you provide your response in that way. I think the other questions that would relate to your National Wash Authority. Questions, uh, PMU Wash Unit. Okay, I think that's, just to stress this point so you can. So, uh, chairman, I think, uh, that's, that's one of the worst, uh, worst, uh, authority is one of the legislation that, like for other, other areas that we will pursue to ensure that it's in place. So that will address the children welfare if they answer and say that, uh, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tanda and your officers. If you have other concluded remarks, you may say this. Otherwise, I will, uh, thank you and, uh, ask you all to excuse yourself. We have, uh, two more departments to go. And our time now is twenty to four.
Thank you. We, we, this will, uh, written response. So thank, thank you, chairman and members. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present ourselves. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tanda. You all may be excused. All right, uh, do we have a representative from the Department of Treasury? Here with us, Secretary, um, O Y K is here or not? Treasury is here or not? Anybody from Treasury or not? All right, do we have, uh, from Finance here or not? Okay, do we have, uh, Civil Registry here? If there is no other, uh, there's these three, uh, two department and one government agency, I will, uh, probably, um, bring our, um, proceeding today to, uh, close. Yeah. So it's now, um, three forty-two, it's about eighteen to four. Um, I want to, um, adjourn our, uh, inquiry to tomorrow at nine o'clock. But before we go, I want to thank everyone, especially all our committee members. I thank you all for making time. Uh, it's a new committee and I know all of us have, uh, other committee responsibilities and other responsibilities in our constituents and province, uh, for Governor Mutaval and myself. But, um, I thank you all for making time for this, uh, important committee work. As you all can see, uh, the work of the committee is very important, uh, especially for us shining light on our children and how we are supporting them, not supporting them, neglecting them, the challenges that they face, how parents are faring and all the departments are putting priority or coming up with so many excuses in terms of, uh, implementing the policies and projects that they need to get, uh, support to our children. So very important work and, um, I thank you all for a great start today. I want to thank our team too from UNICEF and technical team. Uh, Vera and, uh, Ed, Ed Deputy are here. And other stakeholders too from, uh, Chi, Chi, Children's Fund and. Save the children. Chi, Children's Fund, Child Fund. I want to thank, uh, all the other stakeholders who are here too. Um, Secretariat of the, uh, Staff of the Secretariat, uh, here in Parliament and of course our media team for the coverage today. Thank you very much, everyone. We will see you all tomorrow. A great day today is a good start. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman.
Yes.
Chairman. So we, we covered the.
Tomorrow it's a provincial government.
In the morning we covered.
We covered, uh, health, edu, health, uh, community development.
Did we task them to do anything for us or for the committee?
Uh, they'll, they'll go back and write, write, write up the.